Call order, the meeting of the Greenwood Common Council on Monday, October the 4th. You would please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance and after that, please remain standing. We'll be led in prayer this evening by Joanna Morris, the agreement coordinator for a new hospital.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in prayer. Father, you are so gracious to us. We are so grateful for your promise that your eyes are continually going to and fro throughout the earth, looking for those whose hearts are completely yours, so that you might give them support. Father, we pray that this evening, that might be our experience, that we would know your great support in our dealings with one another. Thank you, Father. For Jesus' sake, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. May this evening... Roll call.
Present.
Here.
Dine.
Here.
Dixon.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Popper.
Here.
Lexie.
Here.
Middleton.
Here.
Lewis.
Here. We have a core. All of you should have received copies in the minutes for our last regular meeting of September the 20th. Do you have a motion, Solu? Mr. Dine, second. Second, Mr. Lexie. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? There are none in roll call in minutes.
Bates.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Dine.
Hi.
Dixon.
Hi.
Hill.
Sten.
Popper.
Hi.
Lexie.
Hi.
Middleton.
Hi.
Hi.
And it's approved on a vote of eight to zero with one abstention. Reports, Corporation Council.
We will receive the items semi-murkly and the litigation report. If you have questions about either of those, please contact me and let me know.
Anything on the controller at this time? You know, the committee or board reports. There are none. Moving on to public comments, and before we get started with this, a couple of things I want to say. When there's been some controversy around central Indiana about public comments, and some places have stopped allowing public comments, I just want to say that when, before I got on the council, the public, there was no place on our agenda for public comments. But since I got on the council, not necessarily due to anything that I did, but the council voted to allow two opportunities in our meetings for the public to address the council. And one at the beginning is for items that are on the agenda. One at the end is for items that are not on the agenda. I just want to say that while I've been on the council, while we've been doing this, for the most part, the public comments have always been kind and gracious, not really a problem. And I think the council has appreciated that, and hopefully that will continue. Just another comment, I know we have several people here tonight that I'm assuming like to speak about something that's on the agenda tonight. Council meetings are technically, I guess, the way one I've heard it put, they are not public meetings, they are meetings that are held in public. And we, the times where the public is allowed to speak is something the council decided to do because we thought it was important to hear from the public. But it's not like it is at the plan commission where the petitioner has so many minutes and then the remonstrators have so many minutes, and then there's a rebuttal and another rebuttal. That's not the way it works. Unless an ordinance or a resolution has a scheduled public hearing, the public does not speak at the time that an ordinance comes up on the agenda. So if there's an item on the agenda tonight that you would like to address, you'll need to do that in just a moment when we open it up for public comments. And if you have a copy of the agenda, you will notice that there is a five-minute time limit for individuals and a 20-minute time limit on a topic. So that means the next 20 minutes total, not 20 minutes for, you know, the people who are in favor and 20 minutes for people who are opposed. I will say that at the time the ordinance comes up on the agenda, the petitioner will have obviously an opportunity to explain to us what it is they're doing and what they're asking the council to do. But at that time, it'll just be the petitioner, not the public. So with that in mind, we will now open it up for public comment. And if you're here tonight, wish to address the council on an item that is on the agenda, I invite you to step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. And again, a reminder, there is a five-minute time limit per individual, 20 minutes on any particular topic.
Good evening, council. My neighbors, thank you for being here. I'm Randy Gooden, 1157 Central Park Boulevard, South Greenwood, Indiana 46143. And I'm here tonight briefly to speak regarding ordinance 2143. And every time here is in the ordinance, when you read this, the commitment for the buffer. It's stated as a large buffer, which is marked as 40 feet landscaping the east property line. I would like to ask the council and the petitioner to consider either increasing the buffer or making sure that the buffer is raised as a way to block noise and light from this development. Some would say, well, there's 40 feet between us. To put that in perspective, if we took five and a half common cars, placed them side by side, there's no space in between. That's how much space is between this development and their neighbors. Or if you were to measure the average two-car driveway, it's two and a half driveways width between this development and their neighbors. We've done this for developments on in Festival Park, and I think it's only threatened if it's something on this or this type of development. And people say, well, that's a little extreme. If you think it's extreme, you're welcome to come in my house and spend 24 hours on day of week. And development and noise and the light. And I know that they're well within their standards, but I also know that they have a greater impact on what is realized. I've already lost neighbors. I'm losing a neighbor right now that's been there for several years. And the reason is because he can't sleep. He works a long shift. But because of the noises there, 40 feet away during daytime, he cannot sleep. And he's really sold his house and moved. I noticed, and you already seen, but that there was a petition for reduction for loading dock from 208 to 123. Surely if we put a loading dock 123 from the development, housing development, we can do the same for something like this. I appreciate your time and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
I'm here for the 2345 Chandler Way, Cobblestone, here for the ordinance 2143. We'd like for it to stay residential. Don't believe there's a need for additional commercial property. There's commercial property at the March building at 135 Stones Crossing. There's property at Curvers at Worthville Road and 31. They have additional commercial building just because it's to the south of that part east. If you go to north of the barn, the neighbors get ready to be developed. It's going to be, if it goes commercial, here, the barn's commercial. We'll just continue commercial going north, but then on the north side of Denver, which is 1443 or 44, they had asked for impairments to change their zoning, and it was refused. They're no further east than the barn, no further east than this property trying to be so commercial. The thing about turning commercial is what if it ends up being a KFC that's on South Port Road and ends up right there in back door of Cobblestone neighborhood, right in our neighborhood? Nobody here can dictate what type of store goes into the retail branch. The lighting, the noise, the continuation of people at all hours in that area. If you're adding more people, more traffic, just because you pull traffic off that intersection doesn't mean there's going to be less traffic, just because you're not hitting the driveway out of Worthville Road. The neighbors have submitted emails to all of you, I'm sure of. And we'd like to see that proposal not passed, turn into commercial property.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Dr. David Miles Speckel. I currently live at 2303 Chandler Way, the Cobblestone Development, my wife's Dr. Speckel Fisher. We both work in the Greenwood area as well as in Southern Indianapolis. See anywhere from, I think I see about five and a half thousand faces a year in the building network. It seems, I think, the count from last year was 7,224. So I see a lot of people. I interact with a lot of people. I talk to people all over the state. I manage 16 different retail stores, optometrists, providing glasses and contacts throughout the state. I call Greenwood my home. I live in Greenwood. I drive all over the state every week, and I'm here tonight. So thank you for your time and consideration on this. I'm currently against 2143. When I was purchasing my home a few years ago, I looked for residential, a place I could go out and walk with my kid. I drove around Greenwood. I drove around Palm. I drove around Zionville, Mobile, similar places. I chose this particular area to build residential. One of my favorite past homes for my wife, we give them to her, is going out and going for walks. What's going to happen when there's increased traffic, more light pollution, more noise, people leaving bars and restaurants? You don't know what's going to be in that lot in three to five years. Most restaurants fail. And while it gives very good case scenarios last time we were here, at the same time, you cannot guarantee what is going to be in this six-acre lot in three to five years. No one can. And the last thing we want to do is have all these homes in the area, find the more subdivisions that are coming, with kids out playing, with more nuisance commercial areas, big shops, adult entertainment shops, other bars and similar. So at this point, I would like you to, you know, consider the fact that what looks good now might not be what's there in three or five years and help me to keep something probably a great place that I live in, which is Greenwood, in the center of the area. Once again, thank you for your time and consideration for the one tonight.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Josh Woods. I live at 41 Uco Ave, here to post the racing of the speed limit on Madison Avenue at 35 miles an hour between Frye and Noble Street. As a weekly user of that trail and a daily driver of Madison, I'm very satisfied with the 25 mile an hour speed limit south of Noble. Frye and Noble is 16th mile stretch of road. For a motorist to travel this section of the road, they will see a 10-second time savings every additional five miles an hour that they increase. 10 seconds seems like a ridiculous reason to make any changes at any time. That being said, I see the danger to cyclists and pedestrians as a much greater reason to bring the ordinance into question. This trail differs from all the other trails in our city based on the fact that it has more than 21 points of entry where motorists will need to cross the trail to access businesses. This equates over 21 chances for a trail user to have interactions and possible collisions with motorists. If I'm the driver that is making a left-hand turn, I not only have to judge automatically traffic, I have to also pay attention to both directions of traffic on the trail. This maneuver gets progressively harder the faster the oncoming traffic is traveling. This problem is compounded if motorists are unfamiliar with the path or the business drive that they're trying to access. I have personally almost been hit by someone that didn't realize that they had yield pedestrian traffic on the trail. This brings me to the second problem, the Hawk Beacon signal. Currently, you've been discussing increasing speed limit 600 feet from this signal. The signal works a majority of the time without stopping traffic, but I can tell you from experience that the faster someone's approaching the Hawk Beacon, the harder it is for them to slow down. Some motorists are confused by the signal and crosswalks in general. Why add to the confusion? I propose that Madison remains 25 miles an hour from Main Street to Frye Road, adding maximum increase, the Nobles of Frye to 30 miles an hour north of the Beacon signal. I urge you to consider that the intent of this area to be a pedestrian accessible area where businesses, unlike the last people, businesses are going to be there. We spent a lot of money to be able to have pedestrians, and we want to make sure we keep them safe on the track. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm June Purges. I live at 312 Elm Street. I live across the street from all of the bike routes, so I use my bike route every day. And I live across from one of those beacons, which is on Elm Street. I cannot tell you how many times I've almost been run over. They didn't stop. Thank goodness I didn't drive my bike into the road, or I would have been struck. I also, I wish I could have spoke as eloquently as he did about ordinance 2133 back increasing the speed limit. You guys have done such a tremendous job making that bike route. It's wonderful. I mean, force ours. If you increase the speed, it becomes so dangerous, not only for people to see that beacon to stop at enough time, but if you increase it even five miles, it's going to be so dangerous for anyone to cross the lawn. It's going to be a speed drive if anything, if you increase it. So I hope that you think about that before you increase the speed limit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Robyn Platt, and I live at 309 Maple Street. And I too am here to talk about the speed increase. I've walked the trail when it was just a sidewalk. I've walked downtown Greenwood for years, and I have never been more fearful of traffic than I am right now with the new trail. And that is probably not the effect that anybody had hoped for. It's extremely dangerous to cross the road at any of the crosswalks. I don't think people understand the white light. And I'm very afraid if you, if we're posted at 35, everybody knows we run at 45 or 50. And to be honest, I think it's just too dangerous. We've got too many children, mothers, and strollers that are using the trail. And the last thing that we want is someone to be struck because the speed is too high. I hope that you'll consider our concerns and address them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Linda Sargeant. I live at 1247 Stone Ridge Court in Greenwood, Indiana. And I'm here to speak in favor of ordinance 2141 for the rezoning of the property on Stones Crossing. It's my understanding that the council has received many communications from people who are for this and opposed to it as well. And on the ones that are in support of it, I want to reiterate that we really, really need some nice restaurants in that area. The Bay Horse Inn is not going to go anywhere. I don't believe Amanda Cottinham is going to allow it to be developed. It's not going to be compatible with her business there. It's been very successful. As you all know, there's a pretty substantial apartment complex going right across the street, which is zoned commercial along Stones Crossing. It's a two-lane road that separates the commercial on the south side of Stones Crossing from where this property would be. So the comments that this is all residential and it's going to be dangerous to change, change is already on the way, right across the street, maybe what, less than 20 feet away. We're asking you to approve this rezoning so that we can have some tasteful and upscale development in that area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Laura Marlin. I live in Charingdon, Popper. We just moved there from, across the street from my high school. And I've been a huge supporter of Amanda Cottinham, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of 2143. I lived here from Philadelphia and prior to that Tampa 10 years ago into a very large family. It's very big in the community. I'm sure you all know the Skelton family. I'm a part of that. And one of the hesitations I had about this area is just the lack of healthy, fresh food. You know, you drive down 135, and on every corner, there's a Mexican restaurant or a matron store. And it's just, we need more restaurants on the south side. I remember being blown away by going to the football fields, the baseball fields, the soccer fields, the youth sports in this area, and just what this area does for youth sports programs is incredible. I've lived in many different places. I was a professional before. I stayed home as a mom. And it's just, this area is really lacking the place for people to go to fellowship, to have a nice salad, have something healthy. I just think that this area is really truly needing the commercial property to be resowned there for residential. I've been a huge supporter of Amanda's from the minute she opened doors back in 2016. I know that whatever she touches is with high class and done to perfection. I just think this area really truly needs a place to go. We have all these families coming in from so many different areas to our great athletic facilities. And then there's no place to go grab a bite to eat afterwards. And I just think that this community could grow, especially after COVID. Everybody's just feeling the need to get together and to be a community again. And I think having a place off Stones Crossing would be an absolutely fantastic location. So I would definitely urge you to consider supporting rezoning that to commercial for residential.
Alright, thank you.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Dawn Adachi, and I live currently in the Cobblestone community at 1353 Whitfield Way, which is adjacent to the Cottinham property. I live very close to the barn at Bay Horse. And I do experience a lot of, I guess, I'd say inconvenience or discomfort with the amount of light and noise that I often hear. I can actually hear the music inside my house, and I have to either wear headphones or put the TV on or something, I guess, change from what I'm listening to. I guess my concerns are dealing with the sounds that we might hear. I guess, I'm not a very good public speaker, obviously. I'm not very good at speaking.
You're doing fine.
I don't think any of us actually have any problems with the Cottinham or having restaurants or having more things to do in the area. I think those of us that purchased our homes within the past several years, I moved there in 2014, were expecting a larger area of residential, a buffer against noise and anything else like traffic and possibly wandering people that might move out of the area into the areas where we live. I have heard that that was an issue with one of the cases at the barn at Bay Horse. No fault of theirs, but there are no, like, fences around the property to keep the people in. There's beautiful woods that would be great to preserve and have more wildlife and everything that is currently depleted. There are commercial areas that could be purchased and have restaurants and shopping put in. I realize that if you already own the property, it's much easier to build on that, but it's residential. And I'm hoping that it stays residential so that what we experience does not get worse. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Debbie Cottinham. I live at 1336 West Stones Crossing Road. I do live, we do own the acreage there where Amanda and I have, my husband, several, 32 acres there. I will say, there is fencing all around that property. It has been a great property. We also can hear the barn, and you don't hear it inside your homes. And nobody's wearing headphones inside their homes because of the noise from the Bay Horse Inn. Now, we're asking for two small upscale restaurants to go on the property, which will be very nice and conducive to what the Bay Horse Inn is. And I'm very supportive of Amanda and her venture in this. And I guess it's hard for me to understand why, when we present something, we have 18 Cobblestone neighbors that bought up our properties, and we've not really had any issues with anybody, but they don't come downstones. There's no reason you necessarily have to go down Stones Crossing from Cobblestone. They don't walk down Stones Crossing. We don't have sidewalks. So there's all commercial right there in that area, right directly across the street is sports property. And so it just wears it off. But it is just bringing something to our city that is very much needed. And it's a beautiful, beautiful property to have a nice restaurant where you can sit outside and overlook the woods and not a parking lot. So I would appreciate your vote to have this just through. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Julie Walterman. I live at 471 West Broadway Street, here in Old Town Greenwood. And I'm here to speak on increasing the speed limit on Max Traffic. My husband and I moved to Old Town Greenwood about 18 months ago. Part of the draw from living in the center of the area was the small-town feel, which would walk places and feel safe. I also work on Madison Avenue up near on Cammie. So I walk the path, the path I use for biking and walking. And now that it's all open, I see it every day, more and more people using that path. It's a small section you're considering increasing the speed limit. We have 31. 31 has a nice speed limit if people want to go fast. Coming into Old Town Greenwood, it should be a slow experience. You should be looking at the businesses along there, all of the lovely landscaping that you've done. It looks great, and it's wonderful. And I would hate to see that all ruined by an accident where someone on a bike or a small child gets hit. I see children in the apartment complexes waiting for the buses in the morning. I would hate to see someone fall down there at 45 miles an hour and cause a tragic accident. I would hope that you consider all of this, and please vote no. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Again, my name is Dawn Adachi, again. And I would like to ask the council if I may respond to the lady who said that you did not hear the music inside your home. May I just express that yes, I do?
So... Go ahead.
It's for the rezoning of the Cottinham residential to commercial. I do hear the noise inside my house, and I do have to wear headphones if I am to not hear it. You are welcome to come to my home and listen to it on Friday or Saturday evenings. Other than that, I don't know how anybody could say what I hear or don't hear. But thank you very much for your time, and I hope you will consider.
Anyone else? Just to address the council at this time concerning the items on the agenda?
Prime Ward 27 Clay Lane. I got two things. We need to recognize your city grid.
We need to recognize your city grid, grid Christian church for the law.
I'm sorry, Brian, this is an opportunity to speak concerning items that are on the agenda.
Okay, I know, sorry about that.
All right, anybody else wishing to address the council?
I live at 234 Chandler Way. I'm a five-year resident at Cobblestone. I have some concerns about the proposed rezoning. I think it sets precedent for the other homes that are adjacent to the property question. I think that there's no stopping further homes from being changed to commercial, which I do believe it does affect noise, lighting, safety. I also feel that once a commercial property is changed to commercial, that it can be changed, you know, the business can go out. And it can, you know, like we saw on Southport Road where the KFC changed to a porn store. But you know, we do not want that in our backyard. We do not want commercial in our neighborhood. And so we didn't want restaurants in Greenwood, but we do want them far away from the calm and peaceful and serene neighborhood that we call Cobblestone. My husband is on the HOA and they did a survey and the majority, I don't have that data with me, but the majority was negative. We do not want the restaurants. We do not want the rezoning. And it's not the Cunningham or the barn. We just do not want commercial. I heard a couple of years ago, there was an arrest made from someone walking in the neighborhood. A drunk left the barn. Someone from Martinfield's on the news. That can happen and start having more alcohol and more outside dining. That can also occur again more frequently. We don't want that. I, my home sits across from the bus stop. The children are in the street all the time playing and running. This is a very happy community, very quiet and peaceful. And I just implore you to say no to the rezoning and have the restaurants rebuilt in your house. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. In case anybody else wishing to speak concerning ordinance 2143. As I mentioned earlier, there's a 20-minute time limit for topic and there's two minutes and 30 seconds left in that 20 minutes in case anybody else wants to speak.
Hello, my name is Susan Graybrook and I live at 2822 Stones Bay Drive. I would like to say that I have had two events at the barn. When my husband was killed two, four years ago on a racing, we held his celebration of life at the barn. We had a lot of music. We had a 21 gun salute because he was a veteran. I just got remarried this summer and I am very pleased to say that I helped that at the barn as well. We also had music then. I don't believe anyone was out wandering around. I, I actually rented, Amanda has a beautiful cabin that's back on the property that you cannot see from the barn. And when you're at this cabin, you can't see the barn. I can't, I couldn't see Stone's Crossing. I sat outside on the porch. There was another event going on and I sat out there drinking my glass of wine and really not hearing much of anything. It's a beautiful property. I live just west of the big grill in that neighborhood right there. We very much need something that is in the fast food. And I hope that you do pass this ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lane Fish. I live immediately next door to the 1464 property.
Just for record, you have one minute.
The only fencing around there that I'm aware of is the fencing that allows my three acres. We do hear lots of music, lots of laughter, occasional screaming yelling that we wonder if this is a fight. Yes, there was an incident a few years ago with an off-duty policeman and a gun. That made the newspaper. So I'm opposed to the bars, more alcohol, drainage. You know, we're in support of leaving it country, just leaving it a beautiful woods. The barn is beautiful. We don't need, yes, we need restaurants. We don't need them or want them there. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else wishing to address the council concerning anything other than ordinance 2143? All right, seeing none. As it would, your upper ordinance is a resolutions, notice of intent to consider. Let me say too, before we get to this, that items under notice of intent to consider come to us from the plan commission. And unlike other ordinances, other ordinances have one night introduction. And two weeks later, a first reading and a vote. And two weeks later, a second reading and a vote. So you see that takes three meetings to accomplish that. Items under notice of intent to consider are a one night, one vote, and then it's done. So just so members of the audience understand how that works in case I don't want to have any confusion. So notice of intent to consider, ordinance number 2143.
And ordinance to amend the official zoning map, adopt a bio reference and unified development ordinance number 2029. Proposed rezoning of approximately 6.57 acres located at 1464 West Jones Crossing Road, MJH Holdings LLC, Amanda Cunningham Johnson property sponsored by Dawn's.
Do I have a motion? So Mr. Dine, you have a second.
Second.
Second, Ms. Gibson. Anybody wishing to present and speak on behalf of the petitioner?
I think I'm supposed to share the screen, but I don't know if I did that.
Yes, I can see it.
Okay. Well, you can, but can the people answer?
No, I don't know.
Thank you very much, everybody, for your patience there. My name is Ray Nelson, Crossroads Engineers, representing both owner and developer of the property that has been talked about quite a bit here this evening, 1464 West Jones Crossing Road. Ordinance number 2143. The developer is MJ Holdings LLC, Mike Cunningham with Cunningham Restaurant Group. Six and a half acres, living the large residential to the commercial medium. Just for reference, the commercial medium is a zoning district for the new municipal code that's devoted to medium-scale businesses located in buildings that will serve smart, small to larger scale businesses along corridors that are interspersed with both commercial and residential uses. I would say that we are right in that wheelhouse. Staff did recommend approval and Plank Commission did recommend favorable recommendations to the council. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this evening. Quickly background on Cunningham Restaurant Group. Mike Cunningham is the founder and CEO. His mission statement, in the communities we serve, we will be the restaurant of choice for delighting our guests. And so in addition to being a business owner, he's also quite the philanthropist. In his existing facilities, he participates in second helping in the Indianapolis area. The Mary Lee, Mary Community pantry, that's in Avon area. And then he also has the connecting the pieces, which is a benefit for autism-based nonprofits. If you'd like to know more about Mr. Cunningham and the Cunningham Group, crgdining.com. Couple of the, or a handful of the restaurants, in case anybody is not familiar with what they have done in other areas such as Indianapolis, Florida, Avon, Kentucky, Ohio, Indiana areas. Boulder Creek, Rook Burger Cafe 251, Jaronos, Slivery, Mesh, Ogeta, Moreline, Nessel, Provision, Rives, Stone Creek, Tavern at the Point, Union 50, and Vida, all very reputable upscale restaurants in something I think this area is in dire need of. The vicinity map, we know where it's at, location map. We're specifically located near the northeast corner of State Road 13, or of Galena Drive and Stone's Crossing Road. The, there's been a lot of talk with the people from Cobblestone. Just for reference, this map doesn't have a scale on it, but as a crow flies to the nearest lot in Cobblestone, we're about two tenths of a mile. So it's nearly a quarter of a mile to the nearest residence or to the nearest residence in Cobblestone. Just to give you an idea of proximity, directly across the street, and I mean directly across the street, is Schwartz Crossing Commercial subdivision currently on docket. The subdivision as well as the flats at Stone's Crossing, multi-family commercial or multi-family apartment complex is underway. To the north, well, I said the zoning cap first. Just as a quick reference, we're commercial small to the north of us. The yellow star obviously being the property in question. The subdivision that I was just discussing to the south is some commercial large, large area, well over 100 acres is owned commercial large. You can see that the property that we are talking about tonight does not extend any further east than that commercial large zoning district. So we've got more commercial medium to the northwest. We've got some additional commercial small at the intersection of 135 and Stone's Crossing. There on the left-hand side of your screen specifically. The lane use map, which I was going to touch on, speaking of the commercial, we have significant commercial at the Grove of Stones Crossing that is under development. Actually, we've got multi-family senior apartments that are on docket to be approved. And then vacant ground that is ready for development to the south of that. And then the commercial to the northwest. Apartments just to the northwest of us, obviously the Barnet Bay Horse due north. You can see Cobblestone up there to the northeast a little bit, some single family. As you start venturing east along Stone's Crossing Road. I mentioned the future CRG apartments, the flats at Schwartz Crossing. And then existing, we've got the Franciscan Express Carriage at Stone's Crossing, as well as the Citizens Bank. All this is right there, again, in the property in question, directly across the street. The anticipated uses on this roadway are consistent with the development of the road itself. This, this is the future east-west corridor. We're well aware of the construction that's ongoing between 31 and Abert Road. This is the typical section that is anticipated from Honey Creek to 135. So under construction right now is 31, or actually Abert to Honey Creek. So from Honey Creek to 135 is going to be a similar cross-section where initially it'll initially be two lanes. But it is built in a right-of-way width such that lane winding when traffic is necessitated, the winding will be inside. So the right-of-way acquisition is done upfront, save on money costs for future increases in land value. And then when the traffic meets, arrives, the lanes will be installed and widened inside the right-of-way. It gets just like White Moon Rock, which is one of the legs of the east-west border going from 135 to the roundabout at County Road 144. So this, this is what we're to expect directly adjacent to the property and along Stone's Crossing Road in the area. And to facilitate that, we do have the conceptual layout that we submitted. And with this, we've got a 65-foot proposed half right-of-way because that's what the right-of-way width required. To don't dedicate is along a primary arterial. And that's exactly what we are on, is a primary arterial with commercial to the south, multi-family to the north of us, soon to be multi-family to the south, a church due east of Galena Drive, I'm sorry, deep west of Galena Drive. In addition, obviously to the dedicated right-of-way, you can see we've got three potential lots that the owner, Amanda, is working with MJ Holdings to lay out. Lots one and two would be reserved for a couple of the restaurants that Cunningham Restaurant Group has in their repertoire. And then the lot three would be reserved for future, future commercial retail uses that would be ancillary and compatible with, with the area. I will say that we also have, I'm sorry, the county area, which is in the northeast corner to provide detention for Greenwood stormwater requirements, both in quantity and quality. We would need those ordinances. The drainage patterns are going to continue. And they actually, it routes to the west northwest through the existing Copper Chase apartment complex. I know that there's been a lot of talk on drainage. I don't want to hammer it home too much since we're just zoning. But so here's the drainage on the north side. And I apologize if you cannot make out these contours. So the area kind of to the bottom left-hand side of your screen is, is the property that we're at. Bay Horse Inn itself is actually about an 805 elevation with a detention pond elevation at 794. We are at anywhere from an 802 to a 795 on our side. The properties to the east of us actually go uphill. So they're about that 803, 804 and then start flowing to the north from that area. It's, it's a flat area, but the drainage patterns are not going to change. So that water comes to the west northwest and we're going to capture what we have to in a detention pond. But we're not allowed to cut off any drainage from anybody. And obviously not allowed to create an issue or cut off anybody. To the south side, the east side of the property, which is sort of in the middle of the lot here. I don't know if you can see, I apologize for the screen here, but we're basically at a high point. So there were some concerns about drainage to the east of us. And then on the south side, the contours are such that it's actually a split in the drainage pattern. And that drainage goes to the southeast, so it's not even come to us. So anything to the south is going to be handled differently. The little bit of water that is on the south directly adjacent to us is actually being taken care of with the Schwartz Crossing subdivision. My company did the plans for this, so I'm a little aware of the area. We're actually adding a pace side ditch on the south side of Stone's Crossing Road. And that drainage is being diverted to the west and then being captured by an inlet. So Schwartz Crossing in itself is doing some work to improve the drainage along the south side. As the development with an accepted rezon, with the development on the north side, the requirements that the stormwater manual has, we would be doing drainage improvements on the north side. The architectural design is consistent with other properties that Mr. Cunningham has done. This one here is one of the, one of his sites. We showed this at Plank Commission and I know that the Plank Commission at the same time just adopted some ordinances that allowed some building materials percentages, et cetera, that would facilitate actually this, this type of look. So I think we, we got, actually got lined up at a good time for the architecture. Inside, here's an example of the livery that Mr. Cunningham has constructed. So you can see it's a, it's a, it's a fine establishment. Again, just, just top quality, both architecturally and furnished inside and out. Here's the provision restaurant that he's, he's done. So this is similar to what we should expect in lots one and two of the proposed property or the proposed subdivision with a successful reset. There's been some talks about uses, and this didn't come up in plant commission. So this is actually brand new, but talking with the developer, talking with the owner, in addition to what has been drafted in the ordinance as far as conditions, we are offering up some specifically excluded uses. And from your use table, there are five, five sections that we would be interested in offering up to the to the council for consideration to be explicitly excluded from the property. Anything listed in the order of retail group, which includes the convenience with gasoline. So there's not going to be a gasoline station at this property. Automotive services, any not major vehicular care services. So there's not going to be any, any type of car service there. Lodging and the lodging that's allowing the CM is bed, breakfast, extended stay and hotel, we would commit to explicitly exclude that as an allowable use on this property. Recreation, really the only recreation allowable use in the CM is an indoor shooting range. And so that would be excluded. Lastly, residential care, which includes the assisted group nursing and development dwellings. Those would be excluded uses on this property with a successful zoning to CM. And then in reply to Mr. Gooden's comment on the buffer, what we would be able to commit to is a four foot tall buffer in conjunction with the buffer landscaping. So there's both sight and sound opportunity, the four foot would eliminate car headlight glares onto the joint property to the east. So we would be able to put in a four foot tall buffer in conjunction with all the other required landscaping that Greenwood's large buffer requires. So we would, we would offer that. Just going through the decision criteria, I don't want to bore you with it, but the comprehensive plan actually does identify this area as residential. However, it gets a lot of high notes as far as meeting the plan of the city as far as providing a development of high quality. There's no environmentally sensitive areas are going to be negatively impacted. We are providing access management. If you notice, there isn't any additional curb cuts on Stones Crossing. Access to the property will be obtained off of Belina Drive. And then there will be a secondary access that actually connects into the drive at Bonnet Bay Horse. So we will not have any additional cuts. So we're removing the cut from the existing residents and not putting a new cut on Stones Crossing. So doing access management as required by the company. Obviously accommodating bicyclists and pedestrians as within the right of way dedication, we'd be providing pedestrian pathway at the sidewalk on the north side of Stones Crossing about our frontage. And then going down just the list of some things that the comprehensive plan pushes and urges, again, using common entrances, common entrances and shared driveways. So the three lots that we're proposing would all share those lots or would share those drives off of Belina Drive. As far as the current conditions, I can't say enough that, you know, we've got the comprehensive apartments to the northwest of us and manual church to the west, Bonnet Bay Horse is to the north of us, and then the Schwartz Crossing Commercial Subdivision, again, directly across the street from us. We are no further east than than what Schwartz Crossing Commercial subdivision is. As far as the most desirable use, this is obviously something that the MJ Holdings and the Cunningham Group are looking for. It is located just west or just east of State Road 135 on the north side of the east-west corridor. And the proximity with these major thoroughfares and the proximity of the apartment complexes, one existing, one proposed, is highly advantageous to the restaurants being proposed. Property values, I had identified during the plant commission, I presented a case back in 2018 of the same property, and identified there was no less value realized in some of the adjacent properties that had sold even prior to the Schwartz Crossing. Since then, I will look back and even adjacent to Deverie Crossing in Cobblestone, adjacent to Deverie Crossing, there was a couple of homes that had sold, most recent one here in 2021, sold for a 21% increase of its sale value from 2017. The furthest south Cobblestone property that I could locate that sold this year at 2249 Redford Court, which would be the closest proximity to the property that we're talking about, which again is a couple of tenths of a mile away. It sold for an increase of 20%, over 20% from its 2017 value. And lastly, what I mentioned at the plant commission was there's a property, three parcels east of Schwartz Crossing subdivision on the south side of Stones Crossing Road that sold for over two and a half times its value from 2014. In 2014, it sold for 110,000. In 2021, it sold for 290,000. So a huge increase in value. And understanding the market right now is a little crazy, but I think what what just speaks to is the fact that the market is going to dictate these lands, the ups and flows of that, not the rezoning of six and a half acres. The six and a half acres, there has been no evidence that the Schwartz Crossing rezoned the CL or Bonnet Bay Horse negatively impacted any values of lands adjacent to us. And then lastly, the responsible development growth is certainly the highest and best use of the property. And the development is consistent again with the adjacent commercial to the south, the high density apartments to both the north and the south, and then we've got the institutional to the west. The last few things that I would say is that there's also been talk about lighting. The city of Greenwood has lighting ordinance, we're going to adhere to that, that prevents the light pollution. I think it's about a half foot candle maximum at a property night in conjunction with the bumper yards of 40 feet. We're not going to have a light pole here, any properties to the to the east that would be residential. So we'll adhere to that. The noise, Greenwood does have a noise ordinance as well. So they would be subject to any complaints if for whatever reason, noise were to get out of hand, that there are laws, provisions, regulations in place that the city can can lean on to impose fines and penalties actually for your. I know that there was a number of people that spoke, but I know that there are also a number of people that didn't speak that are in support. If you just want to raise your hands if you're in support, there's quite a few here this evening in support of this result. So with that, I will be happy to answer any questions and greatly appreciate approval of ordinance 2143.
All right. Thank you. Any questions or comments at this time?
Now the chance. Yes. First of all, if it's a difficult decision, it's too unfortunate that we can't have a situation, someone will leave every night disappointed. And I don't like that. I don't like to see people disappointed. I don't like to see people unhappy with decisions that are made here, this council. I do remember that years ago, when this was first come to our attention as a part of a, as an annex to the city, that the property owners in question came to the city and asked for either a variance or some kind of zoning change to get what they wanted to do. I remember going to the property, I remember talking to the owner, and what they wanted to do, I thought that was great. And I thought, you know, they had that 10 acres of woods or wherever I'd be, mature woods. And I'm a country boy, and I like woods, spent a lot of time in woods growing up. Certainly, I said, well, I'm good with this, you know, I was trying to save as many trees that we can. And so, you know, I don't remember much opposition or to that at that time. This proposes a different situation for me. And certainly, I think they've had a good neighbor, there's no question about that, what they've done to this point. Two things that I have to try to reconcile in my mind is number one, the location, it seems like it's not a good location. I like what somebody said that didn't like this particular proposal, that was the deal of the urban creep, used the word creep. And I could see that, see from where they're coming from, that perspective. So it seemed to me like it's a great idea for upscale restaurants. It just seems like it's in the wrong location. And second, of course, is the fact that, you know, I always try to put the homeowner first in my mind, as I have, say so in a manner to, to the point that what their feelings are, what their, what their perspectives are. And again, I say that to say that, you know, this is a difficult situation for us to be going on. Maybe it's easier for some than others. I've struggled with this. But those are the two things that I have not been able to overcome at this point, thinking that, you know, residents are first, at first take, you know, and residents of the city and so forth, and somewhat my loyalty always is with the homeowner. So I'd say I'm again disappointed that some of us will have to leave or unhack.
Right. Any other comments or questions?
I would like to echo that comment. In Greenwood, Indiana, we're blessed with the 135 corridor, the 31 corridor, Madison Avenue corridor, and various places east and west in between. There are currently vacant restaurant spaces. And one way to look at what we're being asked to do tonight is we're going to add to the restaurant supply line. So we have vacant restaurant spaces in the city already. And we're being had to, we're being asked to add to the supply, if you will, of restaurant space. And it seems to me that we are undermining our existing property owners, including our biggest taxpayer of the city. I think Sunning Property Group has at least one vacant restaurant space and its location. So we're being asked to be add to the competition of existing and loyal property owners, if you will, unnecessarily. So we have empty restaurant spaces in the city already, and we're being asked to add to that. And I'm up against the proposal for that reason, plus the change in the scenery in the neck of the woods.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
They had several commitments. I don't see them in the ordinance as far as making amendment to add those and some additional ones as well. Let's see, we had automotive retail, automotive service, lodging, recreation, and residential care shall be excluded. I'm just going to try to go through the list here, find out what else probably shouldn't be on that property. Should this pass and those restaurants go under. Arts and entertainment, motion picture, live theaters. Anything other personal care services, maybe not the best spot for an adult daycare center or childcare center or funeral. Congregation, it's obviously an event center or social club that might work there since they already have that, that would prohibit a religious assembly. Also exclude fast food, our food service, quick service, fast food with the dry through and doctorate through as well. Yeah, sorry. Under medical health, a health and wellness fitness facility or gym shall be prohibited. Torn by massage, just a quick show of hands, massage shall be prohibited. Okay, thank you. Full service hospital shall also be prohibited. Well, it's, it's allowed use there, so.
So getting forward back to.
Education.
To.
Yeah, there's no list. We're not doing no.
I want to ask your question about something. You had, you said no on a funeral.
Yeah. For the space, I don't, I don't see it there.
I will be in so long, so.
Education, got that, Sean?
I do.
Lodging is already on there, correct?
I have their proposed additional.
Corporate office would be good there, but. Yeah. Residential dwelling multi-unit building. Also dwelling unit building complex. Are excluded residential care. Your retail and neighborhood grocery. Peppered sales of the first store. Or after a garden center. Retail services, tattoo services. And dry cleaning. I would say this should be probably as well.
My second business.
All right, we have a motion to amend ordinance 2143 to add excluded uses for the property if it's to be included in the ordinance. I won't make Mr. Hopper repeat those, but I think we have a list of all of those. We have a motion and a second, any discussion of the motion to amend ordinance 2143.
So I'm just going to guess that just needs pretty much.
Restaurants.
Retail. And something going that first bill.
Mr. Chairman, are there questions or comments that we are going to be able to respond to here?
Both you felt with the floor.
Yeah, I would.
You can make comments at this point, yes. Or ask us a question, it'll be fun.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would say that change is difficult. When I came to Greenwood in 1999, the end of civilization was the outdoorsman. That was pretty much it. And lots happened.
I'm sorry, before you go on, state your name and address.
Tom Vaybel of Darren, look, that Vaybel's small firm, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I apologize for this and that. Greenwood is changing, changing fast. The community center, great addition, not big enough. Remember, people wanted it bigger. It's not big enough. Freedom Springs. Not big enough. People wanted it bigger. These are great additions to Greenwood. The middle school project, not everybody agrees with it. But most people did, and it's, and it looks like it's going to be great. Not everybody agrees what was going to happen on Madison Avenue, between Main Street and County Line Road, but it looks great. Greenwood's growing. We need businesses. Simon Property Group has a right of first refusal on that vacant restaurant. They get to approve what goes in there. Same thing with the Marsh, Kroger owns it. They get to say what goes in there. There is vacant, available office space between the Oak and Barrel and Bellis the Hospital. It's been like that for 20 years. We can't wait till that fills in. And right now, somebody is interested in that parcel there at the Bay Horse Inn because the market is there, the market demand is there, and this development will square it off with Schwartz. Mrs. Cunningham Johnson's parents live here. Want everybody to think about that for a second. Her parents live here near this property. She is not going to do something to her parents. She also is going to own the prop, she still owns the property in the back. She's had thousands of events there, five years. We've had one incident that resulted in someone's arrest. We also need to support our business owners in the community who are doing outstanding jobs. Not an out of towner, somebody who would. Not an out-of-towner, somebody who lives here. And somebody who's investing in Greenwood. The reason we added the additional specifically excluded uses is because some folks contacted us and let us know what they object to. We're willing to do that. I can't say whether we're willing to do additional commitments. I don't know if there's really an objection from other residents about that. We've included ones that we know folks are opposed to. We're trying to reach the win-win, but at the end of the day, change is difficult. And if we were going to change, then the outdoorsman that's still be the edge of civilization on State Route one thirty-five. And the wood and that development for itself. Please keep that in mind as we discuss this instance, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any discussion on the council inserting the amendment to ordinance twenty-one forty-three? Hearing and then roll call on the amendment to ordinance twenty-one forty-three.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Diane.
Hi.
Gibson.
Hill.
There.
Hopper.
Hi.
Lexi.
Hi.
Middleton.
Hi.
Williams.
May.
Ordinance twenty-one forty-three is amended on a vote of seven to two. Any further discussion on ordinance twenty-one forty-three as amended?
Yes, Mr. President, I would, I would like to make a couple of comments. First of all, we're, we're all familiar with Stone Creek. And we're fortunate that this is a restaurant that's already in our vicinity. We know the type of facility that it is, and we know how they run their business. And I feel like that we could have a restaurant wanting to come in here that we know nothing about. And we do know something about Stone Creek and their owners. I believe also that we see that they monitor the alcohol intake of patrons that they have there. I can tell you that I've been at Serpents Events at the Bay Horse Inn. They've been very congenial and have offered their facilities to the social for our first Bengals, which is a major fundraising for us. And I can tell you that they are always concerned about what's going on and noise levels. So I feel like that they've done a good job with what they had. And I think that there is a need in that quadrant of our city for an upscale restaurant or additional upscale restaurants. And I just, I feel like with the east-west border coming, it's just a matter of a short time until that whole area is going to change even more drastic. And look how, how drastic the change has been on sports property and what's been built there. So that's my thoughts.
Any other comments, questions? All right, hearing none, then roll call, ordinance twenty-one forty-three as amended.
Campbell.
Hi.
Diane.
Hi.
Gibson.
Hi.
Hill.
Hi.
Hopper.
No.
Lexi.
Correct.
Middleton.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
Bates.
May.
Ordinance twenty-one forty-three passes as amended on a vote of six to three, thank you. Ordinance twenty-one forty-four.
And ordinance to amend the text of ordinance twenty-two ninety-nine Unified Development Ordinance out of twenty-five, positions two, three, four, six, and seven to make very corrections, clarifications, additions, and deletions sponsored by.
We have a motion, so move, listen to Mr. Dine second. So Mr. Hopper. Any discussion, I'm sorry, somebody want to present, Mr. Davis?
Good evening, record, don't edit, explaining the city of Greenwood. We did prepare a kind of bullet point list of what's supposed to be your chair calling of all the changes and the reasons behind those changes. This was a rather lengthy list of updates, so didn't want to take all of your time going through every single change line by line. But on the more top level, you'll see some changes in the use staple to add some, add some items, stay on the zones. This was done based on interpretations that I've had to make as director for where certain uses fit. So this will help clarify some of those. Also some questions that we receive regularly specifically about more of the truck and automotive uses. So this will help clarify that a little bit better. Again, these are things that are all covered for right now, but I think it'll really make it a little bit easier for us. They'll see that on the dimensional standards, there's some tweaks. A lot of this is in response to just constructability issues. For example, the townhouses, we list twenty-five feet as a, as the width for townhouses. Dimension lumber comes in even units, so we've taken that to twenty-four. So there are some changes of that nature that we really wanted to dial in, make it a little bit more usable for our builders. When you look at architectural standards, the transparency has been defined across all the districts now. We're also dialing in more on what needs to build with metal. Our ordinance prohibited using products like insulated metal panels that are going on the hill house. And also prohibited using their composite aluminum panels, kind of the same nature, some high-quality building products. So we'd like to add those into the ordinance. And one of the most notable changes is in the accessory structure standards. This is probably the driver of half of the cases we come to the board of zoning deals, which just means we need to get our ordinance right. So we have simplified those standards, we made it a level point, it feels no longer is it dependent on, well, your home's bricks. They have to build a brick shed, but your home is vinyl, so you can do a vinyl shed. Now it's the same standard for everyone. Once you get to a larger shed, we want to see that makes for length, Scott, gives it more durability, because that ground levels where those big sheds get more trimmed up. Otherwise, they're always going to change standards. Now that said, there is one addition, one to this ordinance, I would like to maybe give attention to it here, Will. And that is on accessory structures. So to give the citation where it is, ten of three thirteen, C seven, might include steel on that list for the larger accessory structures. That is the grant, so here the most often, I think it's the most current to have that. It would still have the thirty-six inch masonry base to it. But I feel if we don't address the steel in this ordinance, every accessory structure that they're permanent for, then it's easy as. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I know there's a lot of changes in that, so.
I'll make a motion for that. Sorry.
Could you tell me exactly where and what you want that to say, so I can enter that into any ordinance?
Yes. So if you're looking at section ten, oh, three thirteen, item C, number seven. See, you itemize the list of wood, fiber, cement, masonry, I would insert steel or say materials as the primary structure.
Just the word steel?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion to amend ordinance twenty-one forty-four?
Thank you, Bill, good job, I appreciate it for your contributions.
All right, hearing none, then roll call on the amendment to motion twenty-one forty-four.
Diane.
Hi.
Gibson.
Hi.
Hill.
Hi.
Hopper. Lexi.
Hi.
Middleton.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
Bates.
Hi.
Campbell.
All right, ordinance twenty-one forty-four is amended on a vote of set nine to zero. Any discussion on ordinance twenty-one forty-four as amended? Hearing none, then roll call, ordinance twenty-one forty-four as amended.
Gibson.
Hi.
Hill. Hopper.
Hi.
Lexi. Middleton.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
Bates.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Hi.
Ordinance twenty-one forty-four is, as amended, has passed nine to zero. First reading, ordinance twenty-one thirty-six.
And ordinance for appropriations and tax rates for the twenty-twenty-two budget year sponsored by Campbell.
Do you have a motion? Motion by Mr. Lexi, second, by Mr. Bates. This is scheduled for a public hearing, so open it up for a public hearing. If you wish to speak for or against, ordinance twenty-one thirty-six, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, close the public hearing, any discussion on the council? Hearing then roll call, ordinance twenty-one thirty-six, first reading.
Hill.
Hi.
Hopper.
Hi.
Lexi.
Hi.
Middleton.
May.
Williams.
May.
Bates.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Diane.
Hi.
Gibson.
Hi.
Ordinance twenty-one thirty-six passes first reading seven to, ordinance.
You were too quick, I'd like to go back, please, to ordinance twenty-one forty-four. And we pass back through first reading?
No, we passed it. Okay, ordinance twenty-one thirty-six passes first reading seven to two, ordinance twenty-one thirty-seven.
And ordinance fixing salaries of appointed officers and employees of the city of Greenwood, Indiana, and city utilities for the year twenty-twenty-two sponsored by Campbell.
You have a motion, so move, Mr. Dine second, so, and Mr. Lexi. Any discussion on the council? Hearing an ordinance, roll call, ordinance twenty-one thirty-seven, first reading.
Hopper.
Hi.
Lexi. Middleton.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
Bates.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Diane.
Hi.
Gibson.
Hi.
Hill.
Ordinance twenty-one thirty-seven passes first reading nine to zero, ordinance twenty-one thirty-eight.
And ordinance fixing the salary of the city judge of the city of Greenwood, Indiana for the year twenty-twenty-two sponsored by Campbell.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Motion, Mr. Dine, second, second by Mr. Lexi. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, ordinance twenty-one thirty-eight, first reading.
Lexi.
Hi.
Middleton.
May.
Williams.
May.
Bates.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Diane.
Hi.
Gibson.
Hi.
Hill.
Hi.
Hopper.
Hi.
Ordinance twenty-one thirty-eight passes first reading seven to two, ordinance twenty-one thirty-nine.
And ordinance fixing the salary of the clerk of the city of Greenwood, Indiana for the year twenty-twenty-two sponsored by Campbell.
Do you have a motion?
So move, Mr. Dine, second, so, and Mr. Lexi.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, ordinance twenty-one thirty-nine, first reading.
Middleton.
That.
Williams.
May.
Bates.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Diane.
Hi.
Gibson.
Hi.
Hill. Hopper. Lexi.
Ordinance twenty-one thirty-nine passes first reading seven to two, ordinance twenty-one forty.
And ordinance fixing the salary of the mayor of the city of Greenwood, Indiana for the year twenty-twenty-two sponsored by Campbell.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Dine, second.
Sir.
Mr. Lexi. Any discussion? Seeing then the roll call, ordinance twenty-one forty, first reading.
Williams.
May.
Bates.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Diane.
Hi.
Gibson.
Hi.
Hill. Hopper.
Hi.
Lexi.
All right.
May.
Ordinance twenty-one forty passes first reading seven to two, ordinance twenty-one forty-one.
And ordinance fixing the salary of the common council of the city of Greenwood, Indiana for the year twenty-twenty-two sponsored by Campbell.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Motion, Mr. Dine, second.
Sir.
Second by Mr. Lexi. Any discussion? Seeing then, roll call, ordinance twenty-one forty-one, first reading.
Bates.
May.
Campbell.
Hi.
Diane.
Hi.
Gibson.
Hi.
Hill.
Hi.
Hopper.
May.
Lexi.
Hi.
Middleton.
May.
Williams.
May.
Ordinance twenty-one forty-one passes first reading on a vote of five to four. Resolution twenty-one twenty-one. One.
And resolution of the Greenwood Common Council expressing interest in the purchase of certain land of West Hudson Road sponsored by.
Do you have a motion? Mr. Dine, second, by Ms. Gibson. Any discussion, resolution twenty-one twenty-one? Hearing then, then roll call, resolution twenty-one twenty-one, first reading.
Campbell.
Hi.
Diane.
Hi.
Gibson.
Hi.
Hill. Hopper.
Hi.
Lexi.
Hi.
Middleton.
Hi.
Lewis.
Hi.
Bates.
Hi.
Resolution twenty-one forty, twenty-one twenty-one passes first reading nine zero. Second reading, ordinance twenty-one thirty-three.
And ordinance to prohibit the use of public records for commercial purposes sponsored by Bates, Gibson, and Hopper.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
By Mr. Bates, second.
Second.
By Mr. Dine, any discussion? Hearing then, roll call, resolution twenty-one thirty-three, second reading.
Diane.
Hi.
Gibson.
Hi.
Hill.
Hi.
Hopper.
Hi.
Lexi.
Hi.
Middleton.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
Bates.
Hi.
Campbell.
All right. Resolution twenty-one thirty-three passes second reading nine zero. Sorry, ordinance, ordinance twenty-one thirty-three passes second reading nine zero. Ordinance twenty-one thirty-five.
And ordinance transferring funds within the Parks Fund for the Parks and Recreation Department from budget category four-four-four, sixty thousand dollars to budget category four-two-nine sponsored by Diane.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
By Mr. Bates, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dine. Any discussion? Hearing then, then roll call, ordinance twenty-one thirty-five, second reading.
Gibson.
Hi.
Hill.
Hi.
Hopper.
Hi.
Lexi.
Hi.
Middleton.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
Bates.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Diane.
Ordinance twenty-one thirty-five passes second reading nine zero, ordinance twenty-one forty-two.
And ordinance amending the Greenwood Municipal Code nineteen ninety-three, chapter eight, article five, alter speed zones, North Madison Avenue sponsored by Gibson.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
And this Gibson, second. And Mr. Dine, any discussion?
Yeah, first, could I get clarification? I wasn't at the last meeting, but can I get some clarification on what the existing speed limits are?
I believe the city engineer spoke last time that they're actually in the municipal code as all streets are thirty miles per hour. So most of it is thirty miles per hour because proportions of it that were posted less than that aren't actually in the ordinance. So we want to correct that and make sure after the road improvements, three states, that it was a good safe speed for the condition of the road. I believe there was a traffic study, typically they go wide, they average to the speed, but there are other factors, you can't take into consideration which of the areas in, the congestion, the traffic conditions, and people, with things that might be here. So, Daniel, don't worry to correct me if I misstated anything.
All right, so if I understand it correctly, if we do not pass this ordinance, the speed limits will remain at, will, will be thirty miles an hour.
Daniel Nelson, city engineer, that's for the speed limit between Main Street and Fry Road would remain.
At thirty, thirty miles an hour, so my next comment is, I've been told that the speed limit signs along Madison Avenue, none of them say thirty, they just say twenty-five or thirty-five. So those are wrong, is that correct?
They're, they're not supported by the.
Okay, well, I, that was very nice, you said that very well, I wish, I wish I would have thought of that.
Those are the only speed limit signs around town.
Yeah.
So basically, well, basically you did a traffic study on a road where the speed limit signs are wrong.
There was a speed, the speed study conducted on Madison.
All right. I do believe that there is some concern on the council, so if anyone would wish to make a motion to amend the ordinance as is, that would be a good time, Mr. Stein.
Yes, sir, thank you. I've had several phone calls concerning this, and I'd like to make a motion that the speed limit start at Main Street along Madison at twenty-five miles an hour and go up to Cambie. That way it gives everybody a chance to get across Madison Avenue by the farmer's market and, I think, crosswalk there. And from Cambie north be thirty miles an hour. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Stein, second by Mr. Bates. To set the speed limit from Main to Cambie at twenty-five and leave the remainder from Cambie to Fry at thirty. No, thirty. All right, any, any discussion?
Maybe show of hands in the audience, is that an improvement, is that, okay.
Yeah, we all, no. Kitty, I'm sorry.
And I would just like to tell you, this sheet that you've got, these, these numbers that are on here is what the current postings are, and we can thank the Greenwood Fire Department for having the prints that helps us to know just where those spots are rather than talking about street locations and trying to pinpoint what's there.
All right, any further discussion on the motion to amend ordinance twenty-one forty-two? Hearing none, roll call on the motion to amend ordinance twenty-one forty-two.
Gibson.
Hi.
Hill.
Hi.
Hopper.
Hi.
Lexi.
Hi.
Middleton.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
Bates.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Stein.
Hi.
Ordinance twenty-one forty-two is amended on a vote of nine to zero. Any further discussion on ordinance twenty-one forty-two as amended?
Are we gonna have signs that ordered by?
It will be updated, so if the council were to vote to approve this amended ordinance, the signs will be updated as soon as.
Daniel, do they have signs on hand? Because there is some, there's so many cars that are speeding on the northbound side now.
I, I don't know. That could supply.
All right, any further discussion on ordinance twenty-one forty-two as amended? Hearing none in roll call, ordinance twenty-one forty-two as amended, second reading.
Hill.
Hi.
Hopper.
Hi.
Lexi.
Hi.
Middleton.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
Bates.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Stein.
Hi.
Gibson.
Hi.
Ordinance twenty-one forty-two as amended passes second reading on a vote of nine to zero. New business, introduction of new ordinances and resolutions, resolution twenty-one twenty-two.
And resolution established holidays for employees of the city of Greenwood for the year twenty-two sponsored by Gibson and Hopper. As you know, in the ordinance, you have to set annually holidays, so look at the calendar for twenty-two and put this together.
I assume there are no new holidays this year?
No. We have not amended that to add any new ones since we have done President's Day and Vessin's Day.
All right. Ordinance twenty-one forty-five.
And ordinance of the city of Greenwood, Indiana authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds for the purpose of providing funds to pay for certain capital expenditures and street system projects and incidental expenses in connection therewith on account of the issuance of the bonds, appropriating the proceeds thereof and all matters related thereto sponsored by Bates.
Right.
Almost didn't read the.
Sure.
Yeah, these are, as we discussed during the budget presentations, general obligation bonds that would be paid for through a tax levy based upon our current assessed value, we do have some capacity within the rate in order to maintain a level tax rate to fund this. The capital purchases we're discussing include a ladder for the fire department and engine, a couple of command vehicles, also for the police department, fifteen vehicles, including two K-9 vehicles, some dump trucks for the street department as well, and then also for paving projects and other road.
Any questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Stein. This line is business, comments, and before we open it up to the general public, we have someone from Mr. Todd McKita's office, the attorney general, if you'd like to step forward.
Thank you very much, appreciate the opportunity to speak today, my name is Scott Searcy, my address is five three six four Holly Springs Drive, last I actually lived in Pike County, I'm here tonight to talk a little bit about the outreach program that just started, that Todd McKita started in the attorney general's office to come out and speak to councils and service clubs and other organizations. You're doing with the state services that we provide, one of the things I'm sure that you think about when you think about the attorney general's office is that we represent it in court, but we also do things like we provide to councils such as yourself. Opinions, if you ask for opinion through your state legislature, legislator, we will clarify any state law or something that you might have a question about, laws that are passed, which is why we also have programs such as unclaimed property. That advertise, have been heavily promoting that, unclaimed property, we give that clean dollars to be to Hoosiers, we give away fifty-seven million, or we give back fifty-seven million to Hoosiers last year, I myself, when I started this job, I found four hundred dollars that I never resisted, so Indiana unclaimed, that's about the thing, like that, to inform you and the public about that, we also have Civil Protection Division where we it's a thrill, we have bad actors that can happen here in Indiana, it's business, and we do offer services to try and protect people from, from those bad actors, we had a woman come up to me after one of these talks and she said her sister, who has this is the police, but if they live on Rome, got a call from someone who claimed to be from the IRS and demanded her social security number, she gave it, and so she came up to me and asked me, you know, what can protect her sister, and I'm sure if you know, stewards of public funds, we have the Medicaid fraud division in which we will go after those bad actors as well, and so use that protection as well for Medicaid fraud, we also are now starting a cybersecurity talk, lecture, where we will go out to businesses and places in order to talk about cybersecurity, ransomware worldwide is one of sixty-two percent in the past few years, and we'll bear eleven hundred fifty-eight percent as far as calls and solicitation of email that are fraudulent, I've been getting more and more in the past year calls on my cell phone, I'm sure, as well, so there's services that we offer at the attorney general's office, I'd like to make sure that this is hopefully an open dialogue, so that you bring me issues that you want the attorney general's office to know about, and hopefully this begins a relationship between the city of Greenwood and the attorney general's office, thank you.
All right, any questions? I have a question. You mentioned that the attorney general's office will give an opinion on different laws, how they affect us and that type of thing?
Yes.
Is there a process for doing that, or can just any council person, counselor?
That has to come as a directive from from a legislator, so if you work with a legislator in the area, you could ask us.
All right, thank you, any other questions?
Very old opinion, it's very bad, it needs to be.
Maybe we can get it updated. All right, any other questions? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Johnston. Sir? Do you have something to say?
Thanks, coming in.
No, yeah, thank you very much.
Do you need, Daniel Johnston, to be here once again? During the science time, I wanted to request from the council your support for two application, funding, construction funding applications that the cities are working on right now, that we intend to submit to Indianapolis, which is a planning organization here in just a couple of weeks. Jeremy, were you able to by chance get the PDF files uploaded? I'll try to get a PDF here on screen so I can show you. Two locations on, and yeah, I sent these graphics to you last week, Smith Valley Road and Abert, and a roundabout at Smith Valley Road at Woodman at the one to five project that we're applying for, the second will be a roundabout at Abert Road and Stop Eighteen. Certainly, in spite of individual issues, I guess, with roundabouts or drivers not necessarily all fully and every single time directed correctly around the roundabout, the city's had a lot of success in reducing congestion, traffic at our roundabout sites, we received just in the last month of many, many compliments about the new roundabout at Main Street and that will be, I think a lot of folks certainly appreciate that, residents on the neighborhood, on the neighbors on the north side, the south side. Smith Valley Road, we did a traffic count recently, Smith Valley Road, right at Abert, it gets trapped twenty thousand vehicles a day showing east west, South Lake at that intersection.
All of them went to Iowa there.
We just aren't going there. South Lake at the intersection, it's ten thousand vehicles a day, and on the north side, roughly eighty thousand. Smith Valley and Woodman, certainly it's gonna have similar counts, we've got our new traffic camera out there right now that we'll be able to hopefully hit counts in the next couple of days, we have counts at Abert and Stop Eighteen, not as high, but certainly that's that intersection due to its existing condition, offset intersection, a roundabout there certainly help traffic operations, so I'm asking for the council's support. The time to cross the timeline for this is, we will apply here in a couple of weeks, the MPO will make selections, announce selections next spring, if, if these two projects are selected, we are probably looking at potential construction type rates in twenty twenty-six.
Are there any questions for Daniel?
Forget to say.
Any questions for Mr. Johnston?
Is it a letter, or is it on the record?
It's not a letter, you have to sign.
And you need a motion?
Motion.
So moved, we have a motion by Mr. Bates, second by Ms. Gibson, to support both of these. Is that correct? Okay.
I love my friend Tom Hore.
All right.
Light one.
All right. I, I do have a question before we vote. If I'm not, I mean, I'm not opposed to saying it's a good idea, because in case I haven't told you, I love the roundabout at Main and Meadowview. That it has changed, I mean, I go through there multiple times a day, and that is wonderful, so I, I love it, I think it's great. I do know that the roundabout at Main and Abert works really well, even though there's some don't like it, it works really well, it works well enough that it has created a traffic jam at the stoplight at Smith Valley and Abert, and so putting a roundabout there is good. Just a comment though, didn't we just recently install a stoplight in front of the high school at Smith Valley?
Like recently, but it has not been recently.
Well, really, how long ago was it?
We're old.
Down quarter is here.
Yeah.
The.
It was Tom's idea, and he's been going a while, so.
Well, that's true. All right. When you're my age, it goes really fast, so, okay, all right, anyway, any, any other questions or discussion on the motion to support these two proposals?
I just have one quick question, is the size, are we taking like the same sizes ones on Main and Meadowview and Abert, or ones the size of Smith Valley and Madison?
So that's a good question, sorry, I'm not able to show you the answer, so.
Just so it's not like Smith Valley and Madison.
Can we work on that?
So break eight other roads into it, I love it.
What I, what I have here are, this is one of the very preliminary concept plans, this is the sorry, I'm not able to get it. But this is just a preliminary concept plan, so Smith Valley and Abert and Woodman Boulevard, the dual roundabout project there. One thing that the city has in its long range plan is the widening of Smith Valley Road ultimately to Forests, so the purpose of this project is so that it would be scalable once that future project comes along, so I guess to just kind of answer your question, they would be large enough to have two, maybe essentially a two lane roundabout of both of these along Smith Valley in preparation for that future long term widening of Smith Valley Road. At.
So essentially a horseville roundabout. Yeah, similar sized horseville sheet.
Yes, it's a sheik road, it's one, two on road.
Okay.
For Stop Eighteen and Abert, it would it would only be a, essentially a one lane roundabout. Again, this is just a preliminary concept here. But since it is an offset intersection, it, it would be very similar in size to Main, Main and the Main and Abert, probably a little larger than Main and Abert, but one lane.
Any other questions for Mr. Johnston? All right, we do have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We have, all of us need to sign both these, so I'll send these around momentarily. All right, anyone in the audience now wishing to address the council concerning items that are not on the agenda? If you are, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Ryan Moore, twenty seventh point line, Greenwood again, this past September eleventh through thirteenth, Greenwood Christian Church went out in the community to a lot of projects, they did one that I just entered this in fact, they did some work at Northeast, they did some pickup trucking of the city of Greenwood, they put a ramp in from a white handicap to stall incorporated. They put a ramp in from a white handicap to Saul Incorporated and they used their way out of Mission, Mission Field to paint the ramp. It's done thirty nine foot in size. And then Mike and Mike from Bartville Christian Church was involved in setting up the thing, the designer aid. And then Tim from Saul assigned to a road that's where the headquarters is, but they do ninety two counties a year to do over over a hundred, Marion County. I think this year so far in Greenwood, they've done maybe two or three. I know Greenwood Christian Church was involved. And they did outreach. There is a video online. I've seen it. The Greenwood Church played on a Sunday morning, Saturday night, something like that. It is online. So I think the city of Greenwood needs to do a rec, what you call, I can't pronounce it.
Resolution?
Resolution in honor of this church for the work they did.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Bye. Anybody else in the audience wishing to address or speak to the council concerning items not on the agenda? Alright. Seeing moving on, any miscellaneous business from the council?
First, I have one. It's for the attorney. We passed ordinance number forty three tonight, but we passed it with a number of amendments. Are we signing this premature because it doesn't show the amendments?
It does not have the additional. I am not sure the pages will still be the same if I can so that I can preserve what you've signed. I will, but you may have to sign it a second time.
Yeah, I believe.
Go ahead and sign it. Legal advice. Okay. Seemed like in the past, we've not had that. It became, no, we didn't know that there's going to be amendment made. There was one made, so we held off on signing it until that amendment got part of it.
We've done it both ways. It just depends. Alright, anything else from the council? Any other miscellaneous business from the corporation council?
We have three uniform public disclosure statements that must be accepted at a public meeting, so we may file them at the state. The first one is for Jason Grable, who works in our police department, or his spouse Nicole Grable. She's employed with the Greenwater Parks and Recreation Department for any interest he may have in her earnings.
Have a motion to accept that from someone. Motion by Mister Lexi, second by Mister Bates. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, all opposed?
I don't want to. It's for Nicole Grable, employed in the Parks and Recreation Department as an associate for her husband Jason Grable, police department for any interest she may have in his or any staff as a city employee.
We should accept the call. Second, motion by Mister Lexi, second by Mister Bates. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the last one we have is for Darren Hoggitt, who is our fire chief of his daughter Hannah Elizabeth Hoggitt. Who is working part time in the weekend department for any interest he may have in kind of a basis.
Motion by Mister Lexi, second by Mister Bates. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And just for the record, all three of those were accepted by unanimous votes. Alright, any other?
No.
Anything from the controller at this time? Anything from the mayor? And thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.